Competition that took place and they came in first place out of ten bands.
Wow, that's awesome.
Congratulations to Mrs. Murdock.
That's awesome.
Wonderful. She plays her trumpet in the band, doesn't she?
I believe it's a cornet.
A cornet, thank you.
I believe, but I could be wrong.
Okay, with that, anything else to add? So we have a consent agenda, and we entertain a motion to approve.
So votes to the board.
Mike, Tony, any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, back to you Ben, superintendent report.
Thank you, so I had an opportunity a couple of weeks ago to attend a private viewing of a show called The Ring of Silence. We were in the Flynn Institute of Arts and the show was put together by a, it was actually filmed, a lot of it, a lot of it was filmed in Genesee County. Davis and High School, there's actually quite a bit of footage from Davis and High School. But this movie was extremely intense. The movie is about human trafficking and it's a story about a person who has been through this. I would say that it's mildly graphic, it's definitely a difficult show to watch, but it's also extremely important and eye-opening. And so I attended this with other superintendents across the county to talk through how we might utilize this resource because it's not supposed to be a movie as in it's a Hollywood movie, although it is professionally filmed, it's not supposed to be one, you know, for making all kinds of box office hits, it's supposed to be a movie to bring awareness around this issue. It is an issue in Genesee County and all throughout our country. And so I'm gonna be getting a little bit more information, but I'd like to know if you as a board would be interested. I had made the suggestion that maybe letting board members view the video. If I can get a link to the video, that's what we're waiting on next, so you can have an opportunity to see it. I personally am not overly comfortable just showing it to students, there's a lot that will come out of that, some that will be very difficult to, and challenging to manage. So I guess I'd like you to see the video, you know, at your leisure and then be able to give me some feedback. I do think there's an opportunity for staff to potentially participate in this and then even getting parents involved and seeing how they would maybe with their discretion show this to their, you know, high school child or maybe middle school child. So I just want you to be aware of that, if you have any ideas, or I guess if you're totally opposed to me sending it to you, but I'd like to get that in your hands so that you can see just what's going on with this video and then we can talk about next steps.
I'd like to see it.
I'd like to see it also.
Alright, so I'm gonna work on that.
I would too, I'm wondering, do you, would you also have the rights to show it at the P A C for, for parents only or community members only, non, I have to be an adult?
Yep, we would be able to get, that, that's kind of their intent and they're hoping that, that that happens. I guess if, you know, after you see it, we could make some suggestions on how we move forward. I would suggest maybe having like a viewing at the P A C where we invite parents. And then to a certain extent maybe have, you know, authorization for students that were, you know, approved to see the show as well, so.
I'm very much in support of it, if I may say, just real quick, and we talked about this at the Genesee County School Board Members Association meeting and the head of the Superintendent's Association for the County was talking about this and they were talking, highly encouraging us as board members to see it and two months ago we actually had a presentation from somebody with law enforcement with regards to human trafficking in this area and how really prevalent it is. So it's very powerful, as a matter of fact, this week I just had a conversation with Judy Fridgeline from G I S D and she was saying, because I, I asked her about something else, anyway, point is, is that she was talking about having maybe some mental health professionals there afterwards. It is, she said, it is very unsettling and they are not, right now presently encouraging very large groups, if you're not prepared necessarily for it, so to do, because I thought about the PAC as well, maybe for us as board members and open it up to other school boards to come and see it at the PAC, because we have the capacity, but as a general public we, we might need to talk about after we see it, how large of an audience each time sees it.
Sure.
That was my comment, I would like to, to talk afterwards, at least for, you know, maybe an hour, have like a, a small board set up there, some people that were experts in the field and maybe answer questions.
Yeah, well I will work on getting a link so that you can see it and then we'll kind of take that to the next level.
Are teachers required to have this type of training?
Um, we had a really good discussion about that, the answer's no, they're not.
Are you? We are.
But.
Required to?
It's recommended by my staff, but.
Yeah, so.
No requirement.
It's not, it's not a requirement for teaching staff?
No, and, and this gets into a very, very large topic that ended up being over an hour conversation at our superintendent's meeting. Some of the pushback is, this is extremely important and we need to be focusing some energy on this, but schools are routinely asked to do things outside of their original mission. And so what ends up happening is we become the physicians, the counselors, the social workers, the instructors, the, you fill in the blank, the firemen, the firewomen, and unfortunately, there's some sentiment across the county of, at what point, because every new thing is a thing that the school needs to address. And then there's the other side of the argument that is, well, if schools don't address it or bring it to the forefront, who will? And bring awareness around it, so we're, we're struggling with that a little bit because there is one thing after another that a teacher in a classroom is taking on and thinking about, and I have to get trained in this, and then there's the physical safety and then the allergy safety and then the, this in, you know, teaching and being an administrator has shifted so much from student learning and that's really our core. And so I am certainly not opposed to it and I wanna try and do some things like this to help raise some awareness, but I think it's constantly that when you ask about teachers being trained and these other people being trained, what resources can we put in place for these, these different pieces and what can we do to help? But there's gonna have to be parent involvement and there's gonna have to be parent buy-in to these things, there's gonna have to be community buy-in on these things, it's gonna have to happen beyond just the school. And so that's part of the, the conversation I think at large, so.
I think your point of wa- raising awareness is a good one.
Oh yes, yeah.
You can't do that enough.
Yeah, and being that teachers are included in those mandated reporters, I think this is a topic that awareness is important. Interested to see it.
Absolutely, I'll work on getting that. Uh, the other question that I, I had two, two other, I have a couple of reporting things, but a couple of questions still. I had brought up about six months ago, the possibility of having a student representative for the board. And I, I, I meet sometimes with students at the high school, I think this would be a, a good opportunity for us to have a student voice at the table, so I just wanted to make sure there's nobody opposed to that. And then I'm probably going to follow up just with each of you to ask for any suggestions you might have relative to how that person is selected and where they might come from.
Didn't we discuss that at the policy meeting?
I think we did.
We did, yep, we did, yep.
Do you have any recommendations or no?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so any objections to me moving forward with student board representation? Okay. Uh, board tours, so we have scheduled board tours in the past, we usually get sometimes two, sometimes one board member. I'd like to schedule board tours that, number one, I wanna schedule them as often as you wanna come and see the kids learning and, and doing those things. I know that that's a loaded question because you all have jobs and busy schedules, so is there a desire to still have board tours? Maybe less frequently, maybe you want me to continue them at the same level? I'm just trying to get some feedback and direction from you on that piece.
How often are you looking?
We were doing them monthly and we've kind of tapered back to like every other month. So that's up to you guys on.
Every second month? During the school year?
Okay.
So for me, the, the day of the week is, is sometimes problematic and, and or, but, and I'm sure others may have, different days that they could do it, so I don't know if we could pull the audience to get a consensus and it might change from month to month or week to week, so.
So if we were to say I'd like to take a board tour in May, could each of you email me maybe three or four dates and times that would be preferable to you?
And in, probably in the middle of the day, like late morning into early afternoon?
Yeah, it's obviously gotta be during the school day because if you're gonna see students and teachers working, you know, it's gotta be that, so. So if you could just maybe make that a point.
How do you do them, you just select a school that day that you're doing?
We put it out there ahead of time, so we'll say, you know, in May we're gonna see, and I'm making this up, I mean, we'll go back to where our, our schedule, but we might say we're gonna go see Sirene, we're gonna see the middle school and we're gonna see Elm's Room, you know, and, and we'll visit those three schools, so we typically get to three.
You'd use to do them monthly?
Yes. And there are times where you have three or four board members and then there are times where you have one.
I mean, I would just voice, I feel like that's a little bit of overkill, I mean, once you've been, is it really gonna change month to month?
Well, everything, yeah, it just depends on what, you'll see something different every time, I mean, it's not scripted, so you're gonna see.
Plus you may have questions, maybe this is what you learned this month and then next month, man, I, I didn't think about this, it's good that we go, the only question is, if we all get together, is that a problem with the Open Meetings Act when we have five or six people together, I don't wanna, you know, how I am about the rules?
Oh yeah, you're right.
So how are we gonna do that, or can we do it maybe in groups of three?
Yep, so what we do is for travel, you can't be any more than three in a vehicle and we have to post, and when we post the tour, we post the, we openly post the locations that will be.
Just in case more of us show up, so that way we're in compliance with law, I have no problem with it then.
Yeah.
And I know what Alicia's saying, it might be overkill, but maybe we forgot about A and then we think about F next month and then we go and say, hey, I wanna find out with those fire extinguishers we're all up to snuff or whatever.
Yeah.
So yeah, yeah, great idea.
So I'll, I'll look at scheduling one for May and if you have any days that are particularly better than others, if you just could email me and we'll go from there. For Chuck, Alicia and Jessica, there is a necess, there's a necessity for you to be trained in the super evaluation, superintendent evaluation tool. We have a scheduled training, I talked with Fenton, there's, they've scheduled one next week on April eighteenth from five thirty to seven thirty.
April eighteenth?
Yep, it's a, it's a Wednesday.
It's gonna be more one day to move.
We can have them come at a different date, yes.
But it's.
I thought they were talking about putting that online through M A S B, but no.
Um, M A S B may be doing that, we don't use their tool.
Oh, gotcha.
Now, do I still need to do that if I participated with the superintendent evaluation?
Yes.
Because it has to be on our tool, we've chosen.
Yeah.
April eighteenth is kind of bad for me just technically, for you, for you ladies, for you ladies, if we could pick another day.
Okay.
I'm looking at my schedule.
So, so then what I'll do, uh, just for the three of you.
You said Wednesday though, that's not a.
It's a Thursday, I'll get with the three of you and we'll see if we can come up with a date that works better. Okay.
In what way would we have to do it, can we do it here then?
Yeah.
They'll come and facilitate it here?
They will, it's gonna take two hours.
Oh really?
Yep.
Oh, okay, great.
And they'll come here and do it. They're out of Macomb County.
Can we get past those yet?
Yeah. That's a good question.
June thirteenth, June twentieth.
Yes.
I could eat a little ham sandwich.
I wanted to just also report, we had a, a really neat, I was able to participate in a really neat experience at the high school. We participated in what's called the Young, the Young Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge this year, and if you've ever seen Shark Tank, it's basically a miniature version of Shark Tank, so it's their high school students, they come up with an innovative idea and they basically have ninety seconds to pitch their business idea to a panel. So I got to sit on a panel with a couple of people from the community, we had, it was the first year, I think there were ten participants. We selected one of our young students for this pitch contest, she was our winner in Schwartz Creek, she's going on to the county competition now and there's actually levels beyond that, so I'm really excited about this, I think the more we can give young people opportunities that have business ideas, opportunities to pitch those to other community members and business leaders, that's a great idea. So I'd like to see it grow next year, so we're, this was just our first foray into it, but pretty neat and exciting thing that's going on there. I also want you to be aware that April eighteenth, I know it's not great for all of you, we just talked about that, we are having our open house for the Little Dragons Learning Center. So that is the night where the teachers and some of the parents are gonna be welcome to come in. Uh, the, the Schwartz Creek Area Art Guild has painted all the murals now, there have been several local businesses that have donated to that, it looks very, very cool in there, it's a little, little businesses of Schwartz Creek and the fire department and the library and things like that, so it's definitely gonna be neat, you'll be able to see the classrooms and the spaces that, for a lot of people in Schwartz Creek, they ask me all the time, I remember going there when I was, when it was a doctor's office and now they wanna see it, you know, as it's the Little Dragon Center, six thirty.
You said the eighteenth?
The eighteenth, yeah.
The sign up there says the seventeenth.
Is it the, it is the seventeenth, I'm sorry, the seventeenth is the Wednesday, so I, I got, I said eighteenth was a Wednesday and that confused me, it's April seventeenth.
At six thirty.
At six thirty, yeah. There's also a community-wide opportunity that the I S D is putting on, I'm gonna leave these out on our counter, but I want each of you to have a copy as well. G I S D is doing something called Community Outboarding and this is actually geared towards seniors in our community who don't really understand or know what the Genesee Career Institute does. And so there will be an opportunity for people to attend, it's May first, from nine o'clock to two thirty. There will be lunch provided and it's a free event for community members to come and they actually get to participate in some of the classes at G I S D. So they'll be able to see, for example, some of the technology labs, the CAD labs, design areas, the auto technical labs and everything that they have there, which is state of the art, so just encouraging anyone in the community that would like to attend, May first from nine to two thirty at the Davis Education Center on Maple Avenue and lunch will be provided.
Do we go as a group then, or, I mean, what are we encouraged to do here, are we just gonna show up?
It's anyone that would like to go, it's geared towards the community, particularly like there's, there's all of the senior center, the Schwartz Creek Senior Center has been invited, they've been given these, so this is me just kind of letting you know that it's going on and you're, you're welcome to attend, but I, I do believe there'll be some seniors there and other community members who are all encouraged to take a look at what they're
I think somebody sent us one of those, like, yeah.
Yeah.
They don't need R S T P though, right?
No.
Okay, how are the communities equipped on this?
I don't know.
Okay, have a culinary program, yes, that's true.
They're supposed to keep work, keep cooking, making the food.
And that's all I have.
I have a question about the entrepreneurship competition, which I think is really great. Do you, do you have a couple of examples of some of the, the students and their ideas?
Yeah, it was actually, I, it ended up being an hour-long conversation with my wife this past weekend because the young lady who won was so impressive. So her idea was a Steak Forty Eight was the name of her business and she had kind of this logo and her business model is that she has created a website where she's worked with real estate firms and she's marketing this to real estate brokers. And what she's done is she's said, I'm gonna take all of these real estate brokers and basically they'll buy this software and what the software does is it integrates all the local community resources, so when you go to close, you have to sign a disclosure statement, you gotta sign this statement, it's gonna put it all into one signatory database and she's saying you'll be able to close within a week instead of the customary thirty days. So of course I'm skeptical of this, so I had more questions and she had a lot of answers and she had said, well, I've talked to the Register of Deeds and if you have a three-day waiting period through HUD, and she knew all of the answers as you're kind of grilling her. And so she was very well-prepared, but I told her, I said, if that actually can happen, you just made a million, millions of dollars because anybody that could take the closing time from thirty days, if I was a broker, I'd be buying it, so she did a fantastic job. So that was one example of kind of her business idea and so it has to be something that's innovative that hasn't been done before and that's what she did.
How much lead time do these students have?
They, they had like a, a week and a half.
Oh my God.
So I actually had a question about, so was this like spearheaded by any specific class or was it just, it was just an idea and it was open to the whole school?
Yep, so we got a, the I S D as a whole, all the superintendents got together and we applied and the, I, we were granted a grant and so we were given a couple thousand dollars to support a sponsor for it and so we have two teachers at the high school who work with the kids and so there's now an entrepreneurship club, I think they meet every other week and the kids that are in the club can participate in this pitch contest, so.
Very cool, that's really cool.
Yeah, it was very neat.
Was it, was it open to the public, could we have gone, because I would have loved.
Yeah, you, you could have, although I didn't, I don't think it was advertised very well, so it was our first year doing it and I think that in the future they'll, we'll make sure we get the word out, because it was pretty good.
Really cool.
I think you should just make a show like Shark Tank, just do that after the fact.
That would be cool.
Alright, moving on, you have informational items list of staff for employment and then we have one committee reports, we had policy, academic achievement, finance and we bond, building site, and are you gonna talk, who's gonna talk about the bonds?
Steering committee.
Probably Brian.
Steering committee, okay, alright, so who wants to start?
I'll start.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, we met, this would be the academic achievement, I'm not even on that committee, but I took notes.
Thanks Brian, well.
You're welcome, Jessica. Uh, we basically reviewed and discussed, Rob presented, essential instruction practices in early literacy, actually he gave us a nice packet to review. And we also reviewed and discussed the Michigan kindergarten entry observation, we talked about the five D plus rubric for instructional growth and teacher evaluation and we also talked about the five dimensions of teaching and learning, there was no public comment. It is actually, there was a lot of information, a lot of information and a lot of information to read and review and so I, is, has that been passed out to everybody here, I know people in the academic.
And at different times, I believe everybody received the five D information, the, some of the other stuff they probably haven't received over.
Yeah, a lot of material.
The E, the early literacy links, there's one for pre-K, one for K three, one for four, five, and I think we've passed out just the K three one before, but I can email all three of those links to everyone, just so that you have an idea what the essentials are pre-K through five. Uh, and then there are multiple K R documents, but I can include that as well.
A lot of, a lot of great information. Then we met on the same day for policy, we've got a new stack of policies to review and I believe they're probably been passed out today also.
We haven't passed those out yet, but we'll get those out to the board.
So we have another packet and we got them that same day, so we.
We'll do our first read next meeting in minutes.
Right, okay, so the next meeting.
Excuse me, so, so you mentioned that'll be electronic going forward, right?
They will be electronic going forward was what we were told, but we got a new pack, so.
Alright, thank you, sorry to interrupt.
That's alright, but, so we were updated and briefed and we received, of course, the new packet was distributed for read and review, there was no public, no public comment. And we did discuss some of the, the highlighter ones, the yellow sheet, so when you get the yellow sheet, we did, kinda did an overview, but we didn't go down the weeds. Any questions? Thank you. And then the steering committee. In fact, Tony, if you want to do bill insight while they find my steering committee stuff.
We had a building insight meeting Monday, April eighth, we started at sixteen ten. We talked about, it's been an ongoing project, the classroom energy savings where we're, sorry, four ten. We talked about the energy savings program we're doing by changing out the lights, we started in the cage, the middle of the high school, now we're doing the elementary buildings, that's been a huge savings. And we changed our lawn treatment for fertilizer, we have a new contract that was a fifteen hundred dollar savings from going, changing lawn contracts, so that was good. All our fire extinguishers now are up to date, the code are good. We sold both our buses and got a good price for both of them above what we thought we were gonna get, so we did good on that. But we are gonna buy, plan on buying two new trucks before next fall, next winter, plow trucks, two of them are gone, one is good fat, so. And then we talked about with the city, putting in hopefully a three-way traffic light at the middle school. That's.
Cappy Lane.
Cappy and.
And the city's been pretty, they've been very helpful and aggressive in trying to get those things done, the issue of course is just when they can get some of those things up, so it's been good.
We should add in there, Tony, that we're gonna get a reimbursement, remember for the fire extinguishers I asked about?
Oh, that's right, that's right.
So we're gonna get some money back from them people that overcharged us.
Great money.
Didn't fix the extinguishers, right? Isn't that?
Props.
Fifteen hundred bucks back or something.
Question on the lights, do we have the sensors, so like if there's no motion in the room, they automatically go off?
We have those in any of our newer outfitted rooms and certainly offices, but that will be something that's looked at as they redo the LED, they'll be putting LED systems in, so, yeah.
Just another savings option.
And we had no problem with comment. We adjourned at five o'clock and we meet next Monday, May twelfth at four o'clock.
Go ahead.
Finance committee event Monday, we received and discussed cash and investment summary report, you got a copy in your packet tonight for your review, check register for March has been reviewed and it was noted that general fund had one hundred and forty-four checks in amount of four hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars, community ad, one check, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixteen cents, CDC, one check, fifteen hundred dollars, cafeteria fund, six checks in amount of sixty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars, there were payroll, twenty-one checks in amount of two million, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and five hundred and seventy-five dollars. There's currently no quotes or bids out to report, we received and discussed the new Student Activity Fund Deposit Form, which you have also a copy in your packet. Student activity funds will now be deposited into the general fund, but not commingled with other funds. Fund deposits are for the sole purpose of paying for the student activity as described on this form and funds collected will be turned into the building office for deposit within twenty-four hours of being collected. We discussed the nineteen twenty budget preparation and Chris hopes to have the first draft due us sometime in May. There were no public comments, under committee comments, Jessica asked about consideration for establishing an education foundation and she's going to check on this and will probably bring it up later. Chuck had a question on the per pupil funding for school of choice students and the school of choice and the district student amounts are the same, approximately seventy-eight hundred dollars. Chuck also questioned if the district was busing school of choice students and spoke to the liability of picking them up and off at the pickup points. The next meeting is May the thirteenth at three PM, we adjourned at four oh eight. Any questions?
Thank you, Mike.
Steering committee event today, three o'clock. Basically, we reviewed the minutes and the bond financial update, the bills that were paid and the account update. Present, we had a couple of board members and of course, Mr. Michael was here and the design team, W. Uh present, uh we had a couple board members, and of course, uh Mr. Michael was here, and uh the design team, W T A and N J B. And uh the construction team, Will Gas and Neil, uh Ian L were here. Most of the, a lot of the discussion today was uh developing uh another uh schedule, an aggressive schedule with the with the new bid proposals going out. Um but uh a lot of the discussion was uh trying to get the uh the construction done. Uh they've got uh twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and uh twenty twenty-one, and we've got three summers. And uh like Jim from Walgas was saying, uh the chairman from Walgas, um that we've only got fifty-five really uh truly good working days in the summer. So they're trying to aggressively get a lot of the uh the big heavy stuff done. In fact, uh he was talking about the uh the summer of twenty twenty, where we're looking at with this schedule here. Uh maybe uh the the cost of the amount of construction was like twenty-one million in that fifty-five day window, so that would be pretty aggressive. So uh between, a very aggressive discussion, uh trying to uh re-coordinate and remap uh how we're gonna get this done. And what's the high priorities here, Ben had some really good uh suggestions. Another big part of the discussion today was um uh air conditioning and uh the modular heat pumps that are gonna be uh that they're contemplating. Uh the the mechanical design uh co- uh as compared to the rooftop mechanical units. And uh um because of the ceiling space, there there's really minimal or none. Space between the uh the ceiling tiles, the grids, and the ceiling, the structural steel, or the the roof joists. Uh they may have to uh look at it another way, this heat pump design that was shown today, uh it looked nice, but uh. We're talking about uh a lot of these heat pump units in every single classroom. Uh which, we were talking about two hundred or so, uh and the maintenance of that, the cost of that, the install cost. Um you know, there's a, there was a lot of factors, so there, that's a long way from being considered right now, but uh the discussion is out there. Uh we also, uh they did show some, you know, some supplementary drawings of maker spaces. And uh they're looking to reduce the size of some of these maker spaces from like four thousand to maybe twelve, eleven, twelve, thirteen hundred square foot uh units. Uh you know, just uh and have them bid out as optional type bids uh for the next phase of bidding. And of course, the middle school, what the design could potentially look like there at the middle school. And other than that, it was a long meeting, now in fact, I think we were here for almost two hours, I had to leave a little bit early, but is there anything else today? There was a lot of detail that was discussed.
Lot of detail today, uh taught, you talked well about the heat pumps and just the challenge of finding a way to air condition the building. And so you have a variety of systems now with the new technology, but with school classrooms, you have to bring in a certain amount of outside air. And so there's just a lot of different components, and so they've come up with a system that they had recommended when we went out. When they did the cost estimating, when we went out for the bond, that's the same system that they're putting in, um or that they're recommending. So we're gonna meet again tomorrow with our uh H V A C technician, um and so we'll have an opportunity for them to look at that too.
Is is the construction issue specifically for the high school, or is it all buildings that we're having?
Almost all of our buildings, because of the age in which they were built, the ceiling almost comes right to the joists. And so when you start talking about pulling in a thousand cubic feet of air into a classroom, you have to have a pretty good sized duct and ventilation system. And there's just not space to get that in uh easily. And so you start resorting to other questions, well, what if we put it on the side of the wall, and what if we did this? And so we're working with the engineers, we're gonna continue to sharpen our pencils. It, the system that they're proposing isn't, is actually a very, very good system. It would allow each classroom to be controlled by a master unit, and also individually in the classroom within a certain um. So you you might have, you might put some limits on it, so you might say you can only adjust this within five degrees or something like that, you know? But uh you could also zone it, and so that could be a cost savings. And they're the most efficient, so in terms of long-term energy savings, they're the most efficient type of heating and cooling in it, so. Um but you have to factor other things like maintenance and upkeep and all these other factors, so we talked a lot about that today.
Lot of detail.
Yeah. I would also add that we had a citizens oversight committee this past week on Monday, uh yes, Monday. Um uh we met to talk about some of the preliminary drawings that at the time we had for the elementary schools. We talked a little bit about the project timeline, and um I actually passed out some of the uh initial prints to the committee. I let them know that uh their recommendation from their first committee was upheld by the board, which was to, you know, postpone until we went to the next. Um it was a good meeting, I did have to leave just a few minutes early. Um but uh that group will meet again uh in May, and uh we'll have an opportunity to look at this new schedule and the timeline as well.
Back to to Brian's question real quick, Madam Chair. When you, I wasn't here when you guys got the personal bond and all these plans, but with all these new HVAC systems. I'm sure you guys did, did we qualify for the consumer's rebate? It was that figured in, so we could take some of the money off, which could save us some, because I know we're already looking at hundreds of percents over budget, so did did we consider that?
That's a great point, um so it's not built into the cost, for example, we weren't counting on getting any rebates. But I think, I think there are many rebates to be had for that, so that's a good, that's a good.
We need to offset our costs, because you know, I was concerned last meeting about the two hundred percent overage. I don't know if you guys built that in when you did all your bidding, but consumers is still, and this is not a new bill, this is a refurbishment building. So we should be able to qualify, especially if you're in a public building, for huge credits, which may pay for some of the offset that Alicia was concerned about.
Sure.
Because the heat pump system's very expensive, but it's also, we'll get it back in efficiency, you can zone it out, because I've done it on some buildings.
Okay.
So we need to check into that, to see if we can maybe come up with some extra money somewhere, does that make sense?
Oh yeah.
I don't know if that guy brought that up, Brian.
We didn't bring it up today, you know, it was the bidding process, it was done, you know.
But I don't know if they considered the consumer credits, so when you guys did say, hey, we need thirteen million dollars for HVAC, but maybe we can get three point six million back from HVAC.
And then we'll discuss with the C M and, you know.
Make sure they don't, they don't cheat aside of our.
Yeah.
Some of our rebate, somebody doesn't forget.
Yeah, then you gotta, you gotta ask how quickly they can turn that around.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, but if we're gonna put it in, we might as well get the credits. Sounds like, sounds like we gotta put it in anyway, so somebody needs to think about the product.
Sure, absolutely.
Thanks to all of you for your reports, appreciate it very much. Okay, moving on, we have uh our food service presentation from Mr. Wenzel.
So um I think it's been a couple months now, uh we've talked at the board level just about um, you know, our food service program. Uh the request was, could we get Michael in to talk a little bit about some of these programs that we're doing, that I will say we're very proud of. We're very impressed with what Michael's been able to do. And uh we're doing things for our community and for students that a lot of schools don't do. And uh it's not costing us any additional funds, which is pretty amazing, so uh let uh Michael share his story a little bit.
Does this have any concern with the the food not being distributed during the cold, the cold days, I was worried about that? Is this part of it?
That's part of that, yeah.
Yeah, I wanna see the food, thank you, Michael, yes, sorry, yeah, yes.
So, no, thank you very much, David, and all of the board for allowing me to come and present to you. Um I love talking about our food program because it affects the kids, and two things in my life that I love are kids and food. You know, better position to be, you know.
There's a donut and coffee.
Exactly. Um so this is kind of a little snapshot of what we've been up to over the past year and a half, the programs that we've been able to introduce and implement in our school. Um so first, the nitty-gritty, the numbers, uh we have increased our average daily lunches and breakfast overall meals over the last two years. Um from the day that we took over, or not took over, but the, from the day I started, after the sixteen seventeen school year. We've uh been able to produce a hundred and eighty-two more meals a day, that includes breakfast and lunch, not including summers. Uh I'll get to that in a second. But that uh tells you, it tells me, that um what we're producing and what we're advertising to the students and from the ground level, going and talking to the students. Is actually having that intended effect, to get them to try new things. Um moving on, one of the programs that we started last year is uh our supplemental snack program. Uh we were able to qualify for all of our elementaries to receive free snacks uh for the entirety of the school year, last year, this year, and and moving forward. Um we had a certain percentage of students that were affected by the Flint water crisis uh in our school district, uh based on zip code and where our students lived. Um once we met that threshold, we were able to start providing free fruits, vegetables, dairy products to all of our students. So every single day in any of our elementaries, uh you'll see cheese sticks, you'll see apple slices, carrots, free for all the students to take regardless of their income level.
Thank you, thank you. Where'd the grant come from, federal or state?
Federal.
Okay.
Yeah, um each, each year, we've, we've been able to get a grant of about a hundred and eight thousand dollars to provide for these students, the supplemental snacks.
So you said it's based on children who um came from the Flint zip codes.
Correct.
What if they move to Schwartz Creek, um and and do they get followed, does that follow them?
Yes, so so the majority of the students, it's based on zip codes that are in the city of Flint, and there are a multitude of zip codes, I think there were thirty or so. Um and ten percent of our students were the threshold per building. So it wasn't that much, but that allowed all of us to be able to have those.
Qualify us, is what you're saying, although it was ten percent.
Yep. Yep.
But if they initially lived in Flint and now they live here.
Still count.
They still, they still follow them, that's good to know.
And it's for everybody.
Yeah.
So regardless, if, you know, we have only ten percent of the kids in Elms, everybody qualifies.
How long's a grant good?
It's a yearly grant, um I speak with the uh program director who actually used to work at Elms, um which is just funny. Uh and she projects that it's gonna continue on until the money runs out, and we're thinking that's probably around twenty twenty-two. Um but we'll see how things progress from here. Uh our next slide is about our supper program and the new salad bars that we were able to introduce. So another grant that uh was written at the beginning of last year, uh was to provide a brand-new salad bars to all of our buildings. All of our elementaries have a brand-new black plastic double-sided salad bar that just looks very sharp when you're on your board tours. I invite you to go and try the food, try the, try anything you want. I'm gonna send you guys a couple of, or this entire presentation is gonna have two different links, um of two different news stories that were done about our food program last year. One introducing our supper program and one introducing our summer program, and I'll get to that one in a little bit. Uh our supper program, so this began last May. And we provide free meals for any and all students at our high school, middle school now, immediately after the bell rings, until a half hour after that. Most of them are on the bus by then. Um this is regardless of income, once again, this was written, or this was provided by a grant, once again. Um that essentially, we take anything that was prepped for for lunch that day, so the pizzas that weren't cooked. Um the sandwiches that were put together in the containers, PB and J sandwiches, which are everybody's favorite. Um and and set them out there afterwards and let the kids come by. The way we get away with it, um is essentially, it's just a checkoff sheet of how many kids have come through. So i- it could even essentially be a student that doesn't go here, that could come through our line, that's how kind of lax those rules are for supper program are. But right now, um between our high school and middle school, we're serving about four hundred suppers a day. Now, to me, that's a little bittersweet, because that's awesome we're serving that many meals. It's kind of bitter that we have that many kids that are still hungry.
Can 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 a, can a student take more than one, one supper though? I mean, like, he's like, oh, I I gotta feed my grandmother or my brother that may go somewhere.
We have quite a few students that, that'll take.
Is that checked off on the list?
It is, but it's on a different sheet, so so the four hundred suppers daily are four hundred individual students that are taking it. It could be five hundred total meals.
That's what I'm trying to give the number, yeah, I wanna know the number, so.
Yeah.
You're, you're giving it to four hundred students, but it's actually greater than that, because some people are taking.
Correct, because we can only essentially count one student, and then.
Why don't we, why don't we count the suppers, I'm just asking, I mean, why, why is that, is that?
According to C A C F P guidelines, we, that's how they they count them, we're only allowed to get reimbursements for one meal, essentially.
Oh, I see.
But because it's such a great amount of reimbursements, we're okay giving those students.
Are we following the rules then, we're not gonna?
Yeah, oh yeah, absolutely, I I wanted it three times a year.
Just qualify from our, okay.
Yeah, no, I wanted it three times a year, I have to be on topic of that. Uh but very good question, because not everybody understands that, that there are different rules we follow. Our summer feeding program, started this last summer, uh at Winshaw Park, Deek, and our high school, wildly successful. Um we chose Deek because of where our summer school was, we chose Winshaw Park because of the walking distance for a lot of kids. We have so many kids that live in the village, and that was actually our biggest site. Um we were a partner with a couple of local churches, and have them come through and do a couple of face painting events. Um and different activities for the kids to generate even more interest, and the fact that it was at a park, kids went wild, and it was fun. Um we are expanding into more sites this summer for further feeding, which will be on our next slide. This is my newest pet project.
Oh, a food bus.
I'm pointing at, yeah, I'm pointing at the Dragon Diner, but we're gonna put the name out to the kids and have them choose. I recently purchased bus ninety-nine, a special needs bus, and we're in the process of converting it over into a food truck. What we're doing, my dad works for an RV dealership, so we're getting a good deal.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, I'm super excited about this.
I am too.
We're essentially gonna have a rollout awning, a little statue up, and it'll be a window that students will be able to come up. All summer meals are free for all kids, and this, my idea on this, outside of tailgating and end-of-year events, that we can just generally use. In the summer, I wanna post up and have a schedule, Mary Dan on Mondays. Go to our lowest, neediest communities and bring the food to them.
That's amazing.
Distance and traveling is typically everyone's biggest obstacle of getting somewhere, why don't we get rid of that?
You're putting snow tires on?
We can, we'll put chains on it. I'll drive it wherever.
Now, who who's buying the bus again, Michael?
Food service.
Food service is by, so it's gonna own by them.
Correct.
Okay.
It'll be, I mean, it'll be the food service bus, yeah.
Oh, okay, and insurance and everything is all set, so we're covered, Ben and Casey, if anything.
Yes.
That's all, that's my concern, but I love this, it's bringing a tear to mine, I don't tear up too much. I don't tear up too much, buddy. I like this, this is a great, this is a great idea. I wish I would've came, it's a great idea, because I I was complaining about kids not getting any food. Ha, I love it.
Do you go to same locations every week?
We don't, well, because this is such a new pet project, that'll be, I, my goal is to have this in the hometown base parade.
Yes.
I want it ready and show it off in the hometown base parade.
Good for you.
I'm working right now with the, I'm working right now with the N H S and the different uh high school groups, because I want them to be a part of this. I want them to actually help paint it and take pictures, tell a story, that they're actually doing this.
Do any of our schools have this?
Not that I know of.
No. Oh, good, that's a great idea, this is something that's gonna.
Well, I gotta, I gotta outdo, I gotta outdo Ben and Jim's video. Put Schwartz Creek on the map.
You did it. That's gonna be tough.
So this is.
Michael.
Play their music out, the, out of it, like the ice cream truck.
Yeah, exactly.
Big old speakers on top.
Yeah, there's a ton of, I mean, so many different things that we can do with this.
What a good thing.
It's gonna have a cooler and a warmer in it, so we can serve hot and cold meals. Um we're in the process of sourcing albino flooring and getting the whole thing set up.
Whatever you need, let me know, I'd be more than happy to donate money towards it, I will.
Thank you. Do you have, are there any grant, sorry, grant monies, that's just, I was getting asked.
I'm in the process of doing that also, and I don't think even you know this, Chart Wells is actually gonna donate five grand to this bus as well. So, because they're also excited about seeing this. Paint it red with white trim, you know, just make it into a bit.
Put a dragon somewhere.
Exactly.
Put a couple dragons.
Roll window awnings, I'm trying to get a pretty decent deal from, for an awning, an RV awning, my dad works at a dealership, so we're trying to get that at cost, yada yada. But I wanna, I, this is gonna be our thing, this is gonna be for our community.
The bottom line, it's cool, but it's gonna help our kids, and that's what I want.
Absolutely.
Beautiful, I love it.
Is, so are you going to be going to specific locations in the summer?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so right now, our idea is.
Why don't we go to the cage?
Yeah.
On a specific day of every week, and open that cage up in the morning for two or three hours. And I know we'd have to pay somebody, but let's use that cage when when we can during the week. And we'll find out if them kids in the summer are gonna go to the cage.
Well, if they're famous.
We got four baskets.
Free food.
And then at the end of the two or three hours. And then in the two or three hours, you can give them a meal.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a great idea.
That's a fantastic idea.
What about the snow days, we talked about the snow days and the community being fed.
He's already got you covered.
So he could, he could go to Mary Dan or to whatever location he decides to.
Yeah, yeah.
Michael, before you go, and I know this is so cool, you got me, you had me at hello. So, um you guys know this is really near and dear to my heart, so. Um you said you were gonna post a schedule, probably on the Schwartz Creek website. Could you do something like a there's food here um Facebook page for Schwartz Creek? I I'm a graduate of Ferris, and Ferris has a there's food here, and for all the students, and there's a lot of them who don't have food.
And they follow that.
And they follow it, so they get a notice when there's food to go look at a certain building in a certain room where there's leftover food from a meeting. So you could do that, that would be great.
I actually wouldn't mind getting a Schwartz Creek food service handle on Twitter to start reaching out, you know, because that, I mean, that's where everyone's communicating.
I think this is gonna be.
I think this is gonna be something that will, um, when you talk about food service, I don't know of any school district that I've even visited that has the same level of service that we're providing. This right here was, is so innovative and, and this is completely Michael's idea, this is, uh, he deserves all the credit for this, but, um, I think this is gonna be, I think this is gonna be, uh, I think it's gonna be something pretty spectacular and, um, you know, shows that, you know, our district va- one of our top values as a district is family. Um, this is right up that alley, you know, we're trying to feed kids and support families. Um, and I think if we can do that at gra- on grant dollars that are costing the district nothing, um, I mean, it's, it's just a fantastic program.
I think there'll be a lot of community support though, I mean, I complained about this two months ago when we had the cold winter months.
Yeah.
This is great, I don't know how he did it, he did it, it's kind of like, you know, I was com- I won't say the B word, but I was complaining about it, that we do this with the kids. I think he'll get money from community support, this is something we can go to businesses such as mine and the district others.
Maybe get, maybe replicate this and get another one.
Yeah, and, I mean, this is probably one of the best ideas for the complaint that I had, or that some of us had, for the solution, this is, that's great, that's perfect.
Thank you. And if you can accept volunteers, let us know.
Absolutely, yeah, we're always looking for help, um, one of the, another benefit to this is, uh, the employee that we had working at Winshaw Park is actually a bus driver, which you would need to drive our Dragon Diner.
Right, yeah, yeah.
She'll be our person that would, will drive around.
And we'll have other bus drivers, I'm sure, volunteer and help, because they're not gonna be able to do that all summer, but, perfect.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah.
Man, it's a great idea.
I'm excited, very excited about it. Also excited about our next piece, snow day feeding, so beginning next year, at least at the high school. Uh, we have to work out the minutia a little bit on how severe the weather is, but we're going to be open for students to come and eat breakfast and lunch. Why not? Uh, the students that are stuck at home, the, the neediest ones are the ones that are hit the hardest by a snow day, they may not have anything to eat.
Well, income, that was my concern. Remember, we talked about that when we had that five days or whatever it was, where no school, the whole week, they were, yeah.
Yeah, the whole week.
So we're gonna feed them.
Great, that's a great idea.
When I advertise this, we can also expand this into our Christmas and spring breaks, or if stu- cause, I mean, just like a snow day, if they don't have food at home, they're not gonna have food at home for two weeks over Christmas break. I mean, we do have the backpack program, and that does provide quite a bit.
Yep.
Let's go a step further and feed them, hot meals.
As long as, like you say, we get the location set up, we don't get in any trouble for having a kid come to a certain spot, we're covered.
Correct.
Yeah, get you.
And this, and this is all, you know, we go.
And the buses, I love it, you could go to, uh, be here for two hours and we're gonna be here for four hours and put it out over social media so the kids can make it there.
Another huge benefit of this, snow day feeding or feeding during breaks, completely free, regardless of income, once again.
Yeah, it's great.
So anyone and everyone can come and is under twenty-three.
Good, good, good.
Um, that's our next project for next year, cause we don't have anything else going on.
Cause we don't wanna see snow till next year, thank you.
Also, one last little tidbit, um, I was at a focus group in, uh, Celine High School, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and this is going to be something that's gonna be coming to our elementary schools next year, it's a food truck facade. Uh, essentially, we're gonna put these, it'll give, you know, traveling, um, kinda standee that's gonna go in front of our serving windows. We can manipulate all of the panels on there, all of the food items on there are stickers that come on and off vinyl. I'm in the process of designing an individual, uh, sticker for each elementary school, so that way it gets their food truck for that week, and it'll travel around and kinda give kids an additional kinda fun thing to do during lunch. Oh, they're eating out of a food truck kinda deal, but it's really just, you know, more of a facade, but it's interesting and different, I guess is, is a good way to put it. And last but not least, Karen already knows about this one, I had to show the youngest dragon that goes here, my buy-in to this district, my daughter Evelyn, who's eight and a half months old. She's our youngest dragon that attends our little Dragon Center, and I'm in love with her, so I had to show, show her off. Absolutely.
Go ahead.
Here, you go first.
Whatever, go. Uh, I just wanna say, and I mentioned this recently to Ben, as a parent, I really appreciate the after-school, um, meals because my kids play sports or band, the practices they're involved with, of trying to get them home and them fussing that their second sandwich has gotten warm, whatever.
Sure.
That I know and I trust that they're actually eating something before their practice, you know, or meat is fantastic, and they, they appreciate it as well. So thank you very much, and thanks for all you do, I've heard great things about you and seeing it as well firsthand as well, so thanks.
So, ditto, I'm gonna actually add, as a parent, um, but also as a medical professional and a nurse, I was called on three times in one season to help students that literally passed out on the swim deck because they hadn't eaten all day.
Yeah.
This after-school program has like completely diminished that, that nobody has to worry about having not eaten since ten AM. Um, it's available, kids use it, irregardless of, you know, income or anything, it's fantastic. Second, I actually have a question. Um, with our Send Money to School program, do we have an account where people can donate for those kids that don't have a fund?
Yes, I have.
I want that information.
I have, well, we're running that currently out of our food service office to, to track it.
Okay.
We run it through our meal service application, Meal Magic, uh, which is directly tied to the Send Money to School. Um, and we have an account in there called an Adult Extra, it's probably has about three thousand dollars in it right now currently from just donations. Um, parents will call in and wanna donate their leftover seniors' money or whatnot. Um, and then we'll periodically, about three or four times a year, go through and find, identify any students that are free, that have a balance, and we'll wipe that out. And we move on to reduce kids, and then anything left after that, we start going bottom up.
Um, can I just suggest, like, at the end of the year, like, this year, actually, I started the year, I'm like, oh, my kids still have money. I would've loved, truly, I would've completely donated that at the end of the year, cause if I already paid it.
Sure.
Into somebody else's account.
Sure.
Um, but I wouldn't have otherwise known, so I don't know if there's something out of Send Money to School that can ask that question?
Yeah, I can, I can actually, uh.
I mean, I get messages when I don't have money in it.
Right, exactly. I'll, uh, I'll reach out to them, cause I'm sure we can have some type of a prompt that.
Or anything, even when I've been making my bill, to, I mean, I have to click, it's okay to add the service fee, do I wanna donate anything to anybody else, I just.
Yeah, I'll absolutely look at that, it's a good idea.
Any way to add a couple bucks here and there, I think is fantastic.
It's a very good idea, and I'll look at it and get back to you.
That's a little less, I mean, it takes, like, I've, I've, I've had this thought, but yet I haven't made the call to give you money.
Sure.
If you're, I mean, I'll be honest, but if something prompts me when I'm, I'm, I'm putting, giving me my credit card now, if I can just give you a couple extra bucks, I, you just might get more. I just don't wanna ever see somebody not eat, so.
Did, did we, did, where did you get the bus from, Michael?
Uh, it's one of our buses.
It's one of our buses?
Yep.
I know we just sold a special needs bus, didn't we?
Yeah, this is one of our actually older out-of-commission, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands of miles it had on it, but.
Was it better than the other one? I, I, I don't, I, I guess we should, I would've asked, should've asked RC that, I guess, or.
Yeah, that would be a good question for him.
Cause I didn't know, cause I know we sold the one, I would've, I would've kinda maybe stopped the sale of the other one.
I mean, yeah.
Or said, hey, let's not sell that and give him the better of the two trucks, or, but you feel sufficient.
Yeah, yeah, we, we actually were.
Because now I know where my mind's going, I gotta get you a nicer truck.
We were actually gonna buy.
Figure out how to get you a better truck, man.
We were actually gonna buy one of the two buses that were sold.
Good.
Um, but we decided on ninety-nine because there was air conditioning already and.
Good.
The lift gate on it will help us move, uh, equipment back and forth off of the.
Right, and it was in better shape than the other one I taken?
Correct.
That's all I, that's all I want, no, I, I don't want you to get a truck, put all this money into it, Michael, and then two years from now, have it peter out on us. I'm just, I know people, but I'll spend money, and that's something we should spend money on, if we're gonna invest it, we need to spend it right.
Be smart about it.
And do, yeah, and do it the right way and get you a good truck, instead of you coming a year from now and saying, hey, the truck puked out, guys, and we need something, so. That's something we should consider as a board, are you sure the truck's okay? I'm opening the door for you, buddy. I love this idea, so now's the time, which is.
Yeah, if, uh, I'll, I'll do my due diligence and I'll report back next month.
Make sure the motor's good, the transmission's good, everything's good and it lasts, okay, good.
Uh, one last thing on the bus, I forgot to mention that, along with the awning, we are also in the process of looking at installing some bike racks on the side, um, to utilize some of the leftover picnic tables that are at Mary Crepo, put that on there, and then we're not gonna be, be holding to a certain location. We can just throw out the picnic tables, throw out the awning, come on up.
Good for you.
Wow.
So, Michael, thank you so much, but please promise me one thing, if you need money, come back.
Yes, personally or for the bus?
Evelyn, Evelyn is so cute, she deserves everything, and I'm sure she has her daddy rep just like this already. But no, if you need money, please would, put the word out to the community and to us as board members that, you know, how we can help you.
I will, thank you.
Money or other contributions.
And Ben's on the list for holding this secret, so none of us knew about this till tonight.
Those are great surprises.
That's a great surprise.
I'm gonna make a closing statement, Michael's been doing a super job, and he doesn't just serve pizza. Because last week, they served meatloaf, and I had a lady tell me that a majority of the kids love that meat. So he's gotta be doing good.
Yeah, cause I'm not cooking at all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Michael.
You're free to go, Michael, if you'd like, I know we are, your little girl might be in bed, but.
She is, I, I actually snuck home and to say hi to her before I came back.
Okay, senior exits.
Are we allowed to share that, cause it's gonna be hard to keep that secret?
Yeah, yeah.
That's so cool.
If you can just close the meeting, I'm happy now, I don't.
I know.
I'm in a great mood of, this is all ending good on a good note, let's just keep it on a good note, can we?
We'll go quickly then, we'll go quickly. Uh, this is just for you to review, um, every year, our seniors take a senior exit survey. And so we get the data back, usually it's quite a bit later, and so this is from our graduates from last year, from twenty eighteen. Um, and what this data is, is it's a variety of questions, it's really out of the career, um, preparation, so the college and career prep, uh, group. And so, uh, you'll be able to see how Schwartz Creek compares to the county overall, I don't have it broken down by other districts, but, um, for example, it'll ask the question, what is the highest level of education that you intend to complete? And so, this is some data that we actually use, it helps us to analyze, you know, the types of programs that we're running and how we're preparing kids for that next level. Um, we also then will track these kids after they're out of high school, and we kinda come back and see how many of them, you know, how they did. Um, a lot of this will break down what university they're planning to attend, and so, uh, I'm just handing this out to you, this is a lot of data. Um, I encourage you to ask me some questions about this data, there's some, we, we utilize this in our, uh, data teams, we look at this, we're gonna continue to look at it. I think you will find it interesting, um, and give you an idea a little bit about some of our strengths, weaknesses, um, areas that, uh, our kids, our graduates, and what they're saying about, uh, their preparation for moving into, into college. If you have any questions at this point, you can let me know.
Military is not included in this, whose question, why is it not included?
Um, you know what, it is included at some point, I'm not sure which question specifically. Um, so anyway, any questions, any other questions, I'm sorry. And obviously, I'm not expecting you to have full knowledge of it now, but I wanted you to be aware of it.
I, I can tell you, and I don't know, Brian, if you've ever seen anything like this, but in the years I've been on the board, I've never seen anything like this, so.
No, it's first for me.
This is really cool.
Yeah, I th- I, I think you would find, as a board member, you'll find it interesting to kinda look at and say, okay, so our students that are leaving us are telling us, you know, how, what impacted you in your planning for your future?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and that's important.
How is it distributed?
What'd you say?
How is it distributed?
Uh, it's distributed by, um, the students, they take it during, uh, I believe they take it during their high, their senior English classes.
Oh, this is, okay, so they're active students that are responding, you said it's last year's graduating class, this is the data from that class, okay. So I was gonna say, a seventy-seven percent survey response is huge, I thought they had already graduated.
No, 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 this is from, this is, uh, we had seventy-seven percent. I will tell you that the county average, um, at sixty-seven percent is, you know, we're doing a lot better than the county in terms of getting those kids to respond, um, which is great.
So we don't know where our graduates live, do we? We don't have the database that tells us where they live, to the best of our knowledge, so that we can do follow-up surveys once they're out.
No. We don't, but, um, that would be great if we had that.
Just to focusing in on, you know, what did you actually decide to do as a career? This is really cool. Yeah, definitely this is cool, thanks. Is there, I just missed that, to follow up, just to see, cause the question asks what the intention is, would be.
Yeah, so there, there are some metrics and ways to track our students and kinda where they go. We, our data gets a lot less reliable, three, four, the further away they get. Um, but we do have some information about what happened to our students the year after high school, two years after high school. You know, and then the data starts to get a little spotty. So next, I have, um, a legislative update, I just wanted you to be aware, um, of a couple of bills that we're monitoring, I'll pass this around this way. Um, House Bill forty-two oh six is the, uh, state of emergency days. Uh, this bill would allow the state superintendent to forgive school closing days in which the governor issued a state of emergency. Um, as you all know, schools are allowed six days. This bill has passed, um, through the committee, um, it's being, so the House of Representatives now has a new process, it's called Ways and Means. It's something that they have to go through, uh, so this is in Ways and Means right now. I will tell you that there's a lot of confidence that this bill is gonna pass. Unfortunately, I'm not sure when, and I'm getting to the point where we need to start, I mean, we've told our parents that there's a possibility that we need to add three days of school, but, um, we really need to get that information out definitively. So, um, we're watching this bill very closely, if we see that it's gonna be stalled and it might not be ready in time, we're probably going to have to make the decision to extend our school year by three days, which would mean Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of the next week. Um, and so, we're hoping to hear if this bill is continuing to move, um, so we should know something in the next couple of weeks. House Bill forty-one sixty-two is the elimination of the ACT work keys, um, this has a lot of support, bipartisan support, both Republicans and Democrats seem to support it. Um, certainly, all of the associations do as well, the test has been a hang-on since, um, ACT. Senate Bill one twenty-two and Senate Bill two oh two are the educator evaluation bills. Um, the committee, I actually was at the Senate Education Committee when they passed this. Um, they have agreed to roll back the forty percent for student growth to twenty-five percent for this year. Um, it will go back to forty percent next year, so that they have more time to deliberate on the bill, so, um, that's kinda where we're at on that. The others are pretty, um, pretty clear. Um, one thing that would, um, one other thing that, that would be interesting is House Bill forty-seventy-five. This bill effectively opens up sinking fund dollars for the purchases of school buses. Uh, that could impact us, and, um, that's currently not an allowable expenditure under the law, and so this would change that, obviously. So just some, a couple of bills to be monitoring, um, right now. The House has been pretty busy, the Senate doesn't have much activity right now, but, any questions on any of that?
Do we know who the chair of House Ways and Means is?
I don't know who the chair is for the House Ways and Means, um, but it's a, it's, it's an additional kinda check and balance that the Senate doesn't have, so it takes the House a little longer to get things through.
Any questions, everybody? Thanks, Ben, so always really helpful information. Okay, next we have The Coddling of the American Mind.
Alright, so I apologize for, uh, being, um, kinda the wet blanket and asking all of you to read chapters in a book, but I thought it was a great opportunity to model a learning community, so, um, I had asked just to have a discussion today about the first two chapters. Um, I'll let, for anyone that's watching our live stream or anybody in the audience, the book is called The Coddling of the American Mind, How Good Intentions and Bad Ideas Are Setting Up a Generation for Failure. Um, the premise of this book is, um, essentially that we have, um, been parenting children, uh, for almost a generation now in a way that removes a lot of adversity from their lives, and, uh, we've been telling them things like trust your feelings. Um, and this has caused a tremendous amount of mental health issues and other issues, so, um, I think the book is important for anyone who deals with students, and so I thought I would just open it up, uh, the first chapter, um, and we can just kinda talk about the first chapter first, the book is really organized into three, um, great untruths, and, and the first, um, chapter kinda gets into the first one there, so, um, I didn't know if anyone wanted to talk about it, but the first chapter is about the untruth of fragility. And basically, the new mantra in parenting is basically, what doesn't kill you makes you weaker. And that is in fact scientifically not true, and also what we know. And that is in fact scientifically not true, and also what we know about psychological research not true. So, I thought I would turn it over if anyone who's read chapter one would just like to share, and maybe we can just have a little bit of a discussion about, uh, that first chapter, and then we'll do the same for the second.
It's a great book. There's a lot to go through. Um, and I, I mean, I can say, I've, I've brought it out, and anybody that touches children, depending on, I mean, your various ways, um, is very interested in this concept, because we, um, are definitely changing our future generations by the amount of bubble we try to put around them. I don't know if I have anything specific. It's just, I mean, I see, I feel myself like shaking my head, mhm, 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 the whole time you're reading through it.
So the interesting thing in the first chapter that I found, uh, anti-fragility, this concept that when you're, um, preparing as an athlete, right, the more you strain your muscles, you prepare them, they become stronger. That's how you grow. Uh, when you're a musician, the harder that you train and practice your craft, the stronger you get. When you're a, um, you, you can apply this to anything. The harder you study, right, the more challenges you put in front of you and that you overcome, or fail and then overcome, the stronger you get. And so, basically, this idea that we are anti-fragile, and for some reason, parents and even teachers and administrators, for whatever reason, have started to protect everyone from all of these stressors that make us actually stronger. Um, and one of the great examples in here, because I brought this up before, this anti-peanut allergy thing is crazy. And, um, you know, it's, it's really a challenge. There'll be people that'll send me hate mail just for bringing it up in this meeting. But the book has a great, uh, so I'll defer to the book. A lot of research on the whole peanut allergy thing, and what they found was that parents, they did, they did controlled, controlled studies, and that the peanut allergies, the increase in peanut allergies is almost entirely attributed to the fact that we've removed peanuts from kids. And so, it, for the, for the, for the parents that are introducing peanuts to their children as infants had almost no peanut allergies because they, your body learns that a peanut allergen is not a harmful thing. And so, that principle was, can be applied, that anti-fragility, to a lot of different things. So, do you think, uh, kids nowadays, or what you're seeing on social media, that, do you think that it's true that we have parents who are treating their kids, or teachers, or schools, that are treating their kids more fragily now? Um, and i- is that an issue?
I absolutely think it's an issue. Every, everything is an issue. There, and, and everybody has to waste their opinion about it, um, and, you know, going back to the peanut allergy. It was a seventeen percent of the kids had a peanut allergy when they, um, were not exposed versus three percent. And it's well-founded in the research. Now, they're actually starting to introduce intra, infants to peanuts earlier. Uh, but we, as a society, I, I, I have five grandchildren, and I worry that, and I, I see their parents trying to parent them, and but I also worry that, that they will be very protected. And, and that will prevent them from forming their own opinions and, um, being critical thinkers in the future. Because everything is, they're, they're protected, or they, they, they look to us, other people to make their decisions for them. You know, one of the, the, the prepare the child for the road, not the road for the child. That's absolutely perfect. Um, so, I, I, I absolutely agree. It's, it's, it's something we have to be very aware of as a society.
There's a, on page twenty-three, there's an author, Nissam Talab, T-A-L-A-B, who wrote a book, uh, called Black Swan, and he speaks to the foolishness of overprotection as a parent as soon as you understand the concept of, of anti-fragility. And he opens his book with a poetic image that should speak to all parents. He notes that wind extinguishes a candle, but energizes a fire. He advises us not to be like candles, not to turn our children into candles. You want to be the fire and wish for the wind.
It's a great quote.
I do like that. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, and back on the, right after what, the peanut theory, they talk about vaccinations. And they talk about small doses of exposing our children, not protecting them so much as we do, and exposing them to the different levels of threats. I mean, not to where you're gonna get hurt, but, uh, so that you can, so that they build up an immune system, you know, and know how to handle, socially know how to handle, uh, different problems in the world. If you're too protective of them, that isn't gonna happen. You gotta, you gotta cut them loose a little bit at a time.
I was just gonna say to that quote, the other, it struck me, I like that, both of the quotes that Carrie mentioned. I really liked that. But the other one that made me think about is, as well, a, a spark can start a big fire and, and a bit. Where, where I'm trying to get to is, the material that's burning also matters in fire. You know what I mean? And I think a little bit, there's a part of this that misses, like, I found it interesting in the, um, and, uh, in the introduction, that they talk about a lot of different things and the circumstances, what brought this up and made them think. But throughout this, at least so far up to chapter two, quite honestly, uh, shootings at schools are really not mentioned. And to me, that is something as a parent, one of the biggest things about wanting to have control and protectiveness is really a feeling of being out of control. And as a parent, like, the other day, it was sad that we were at the dinner table and my daughters were talking about, if there was a school shooting, I, this is the hour that I wish that it would be in because then I could get behind this file cabinet. And to me, sitting there, it was so sad to think about that this is a regular thought in their head, right? And as a parent, so, again, to try, like, understanding that where the idea, behind this in part is fear. There is the other part of that, that in talking about trauma and PTSD, like, um, that of really understanding and communicating and, and going, asking more questions and having clear communication in, uh, about why somebody feels the way they do, the, understand the experiences they've had and help them to get through it. Because I also found that it was interesting that when they were talking about, and I might be jumping ahead here, like, the, and I forgot, I'll find what page it is here, or when they're talking about, um, the, maybe it's not PTSD. I'm not gonna tell you what page it is. Oh, right here. Um, when they were talking about the, what is it, the PTG, right, um, on page twenty-nine. I looked part of that up. Oh, post-traumatic growth. Talking about what post-traumatic growth is, or how somebody has post-traumatic growth, that you, that it's, there's a huge tie into spirituality there, social supports, acceptance of, um, uh, emotional, uh, discord that you have, right? I think is what my note says here. But anyway, the point is, is at one point, they're talking about this exposure to me of, oh, we're protecting people and they just need to deal with it. But really, if you're gonna get through it in this society and us, and we were talking about it earlier, there are so many mental health issues, you need to have those components to address the mental health part of it. I know, I might be creeping in on the next chapter a little bit.
Yeah, so it's a good segue. I will say that later on in the book, you'll find that it's not just about, you know, they just need to get over it, but they, they bring in a lot of research and things about psychological research and things like that later on in other chapters. So I think you'll find that, um, maybe answer comes. The next chapter deals with the, with what they're calling the second grade untruth, and that's emotional reasoning, and it's the untruth that says, always trust your feelings. And, um, and so, basically, what they're saying throughout this chapter is that just because you feel something doesn't mean that it's always the correct response. And we have, uh, as you're seeing college campuses create these safe spaces and all this other kinda stuff, you're seeing people that if they don't, if they're emotionally upset, they attribute all these realities that may or may not be true. And so, he gets into what's called cognitive behavior therapy, where you actually start asking, well, what evidence do I actually have that that's true? And you start kinda talking yourself through it. Um, so I didn't know if any of you found any interesting pieces of information in there.
Let me get to the notes.
I, um, I have to go back and look at specific examples, but the, um, the safe space conversation and examples, and then tying that or, or comparing that to the overuse of social media and this feeling that younger children are having, that they need to be so safe in everything that they, they read and do, and that their, um, self-worth and value is around what other people think of them, is just a complete different generational shift than what we had of the past. And that, what do they call that? The, um, trying to protect their emotions. They had a word for that.
That's right, that's right.
But, you know, try, trying to protect and keep children safe, but also trying to protect them from having, uh, unfortunately, bad emotional experience. The more we try to protect that, we're not allowing them to adapt and overcome when they have, you know, a bad experience. Like, you have to go through the good with the bad to be well-rounded.
There's a difference between physical safety and emotional safety, and people have used safety and broadened the definition. So now, anytime I hear something that I don't like, I'm unsafe, which is a very dangerous road to go down, which is kinda what they're getting at there. So, my intention with this book is, of course, as we go through and just have kind of an opportunity to learn together as a board, um, what I'd like to do, of course, at the end, is talk about where I think we can all find some things that might be applicable to the school, right? So, um, I think you'll find that this book has, um, some things, obviously, there's no perfect book that's silver bullet, but I think there's a lot of intriguing thoughts here. Um, so, you know, I'll just try and maybe it, board meetings throughout the next six months or so, we'll, we'll tackle a couple chapters at a time, and if you have anything of note, you know, feel free to bring it to discuss, and, uh.
So when your team did this book study, did you use like an outline or anything, or, uh, you know, questions that you kept track of that maybe we might be able to answer or kind of be thought-provoking as we're reading it?
So, um, I actually have to kinda be careful of how many books I assign to the staff, so they haven't done this one yet. Um, so we'll, we'll do it ahead of them, but, uh, there isn't a study guide for this particular book, so, you know, it'll just kinda be a discussion, you know, as we go through, so.
Well, now I know that you're gonna ask questions. I'm gonna read different.
There you go.
If I can, and just sitting here, it kinda made me think, and I really appreciate the whole section on, um, of the different quotes throughout time, whether it's our, um, our life is the creation of our mind by the Buddha or Shakespeare. There is nothing either good or bad, but thinking makes it so. And the, um, this line where it says, when it's talking about the cognitive behavioral therapy, Beck's great discovery, that it was possible to break the disempowering feedback cycle between negative beliefs and negative emotions. If you can get people to examine these beliefs and consider counter evidence, it gives them at least a moment of relief from those negative emotions. And I was actually just having a conversation with my dad the other day about this, because this is still prevalent in my life at times, you know? I'm, there's an area where I just said, I, I listened to a speaker on accident, and, um, and it was talking about, like, that, um, we can say that we wanna do something, but one foot's kind of always on the brake, that, that lack of change sometimes happens as a result real, because of a core belief. And, you know, and many times, we don't get down to the lower layers of core beliefs. I can say something on the out, uh, like at a superficial level, or maybe go one or two layers, but it takes a little bit of work to go, okay, really? What's that core belief? And then what's the work behind countering that core belief? Because there's an emotion tied to that, right? And that's what we fear. We fear the emotion based on the core belief that we have. And I, and I'm gonna point down the rock for a minute, cuz when you were a principal, Rod, you might, do you remember? I, I have the, the little bookmark still up on my refrigerator right now, but I can't remember what it's called, the tools that were used. So the I, when you, I feel, and I think, and there, it gave an opportunity for a resolution. Do you remember what that was called at Morris? Cuz that was awesome, like, that's why it's still on my refrigerator for my girls.
Came out of, uh, Soul Shop, which is basically an elementary version of Challenge Day. Uh, and so, one side of the card was taking responsibility, kinda like in, uh, uh, conflict resolution or, um, restorative justice. This is what I did. And, and the other side was more of a owning, owning how I'm feeling about it, what can I do? And, and so, it was kinda like both sides of the argument, and so, one person, depending on which side of the conflict they were on, would use one side to walk through, cleaning it up. It's called the cleanup card.
That's it.
And then the other side for what was gonna be done next. And so, it just gave responsibility to the child to own what was going on and take care of it.
Because, and I think that goes to, now, if you move around me after this, don't let me get talking on something I feel, like, yes! But in that, to help people heal is the opportunity to take responsibility and to talk about what that change is gonna be, you know? And I think this gets to that, the responsibility for, um, feelings and a freedom to be able to express yourself and let others to do that as well.
Absolutely.
Sorry, you were looking at your watch. Kinda threw me off there.
No, no.
I was like, oh, he's going rapid, oh.
No, no.
Okay.
We're good. Excellent. I hope, I hope you'll find the book useful.
Very much, thank you. Okay, onto board action items. We have the GIST biennial election resolution. Um, you have, uh, in your packet, I believe everybody has this, a resolution for designating an electoral representative for the June third biennial election, which by the way, is, um, honors night.
Yes.
Um, so, uh, let's see. Well, you'll be there, right? Because of your son.
I'll be there, honors night. I won't be anywhere else.
Right, right. So, um, GIST election is biennial. This one is on June third. And we are going to be designating someone to be our representative at that meeting, and an alternate.
So just so you know, there are gonna be two resolutions. The first one is selecting, um, you know, the person who's going to attend. And the next month, you'll actually have a resolution on who you're going to vote for, so.
So, um, I would, I would at this point, um, take volunteers before we do voluntold. Anybody?
Did you say nominations or volunteers?
Yes, yes.
What's the date? June third?
June third. Brian, would you be my, uh?
I will be your backup.
Okay, great. Okay, so you'll do it, Jessica? All right, thank you for that. And I don't know what time. Does it say what time?
Um, I believe it's at six-thirty, but we will get the exact time.
Okay, so maybe the person who goes, if they choose to come to honors night, could maybe slip in the back door. Go vote and come back if you wanted to. I'm not looking at you, Alicia. And, um, Brian, you have offered to be the alternate.
Yes.
All right, so, uh, you, you volunteered, but I need a motion to that effect. Brian?
Yep.
Okay, Jessica? You wanna be his second?
So you're just, you're just supporting him?
Oh, yeah, support. Sorry. I was like, oh my, are we reversing this? I'm gonna be your backup?
Okay, so we have, uh, we have a resolution that, um, for our representative to the GIST biennial election, that Jessica will be our representative, representative, and, um, Brian Spenick will be our alternative. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have a motion that has carried. Why don't we go next? Uh, okay, um, we'll write that down. So next, we have the school of choice, um, resolution. Did you wanna go over those, Ben, or just, are we going to just, uh, act on them?
Um, these are annual resolutions. Um, these are consistent with what we've done in the past, so we have one oh five and one oh five C. Uh, they simply deal with, um, the opportunity for children, uh, for our schools to continue to be a school of choice school. This is very consistent with, you know, what most other school districts do, um, you know, and it's there for your consideration again.
So one oh five is, um, unlimited. So one oh five is, um, unlimited enrollment at all buildings, grades and programs, um, with children who are applying from other districts?
Correct, and we still have, um, a, a process where not, you know, we absolutely have screening of students before they're approved, but.
Right, that, that was gonna be my question, and this is a standard language in that we review all students from other districts. And obviously if they had some type of problem, we don't wanna bring them into our district. Additional problems, we have that right to turn it down, although we're voting on this.
Correct, yeah, and I, and we actually, uh, have a number of students that will come that might have past discipline history, you know?
Mine's.
Um, well, depending, I, I mean, if it's a, it's, if it involves any kind of aggressive behavior, sometimes physical aggression, some of those other things, uh, those are reasons that we would deny someone to come here. So we take a look at our student population and we say, okay, is this person gonna be a good fit? You know, and, and we make that call.
I just don't wanna be judged on money, Ben. Everybody's like, oh, we wanna grab these thirty-two students, 'cause we get seventy-eight hundred dollars per student. It's not worth the money.
It's not, not at all.
It's not worth the money to cause grief for the good students that are here to learn, so, that's my only concern.
You're right.
It's my only concern.
So one oh five, just to clarify, is, um, are those districts that are under the GIST umbrella?
Yes.
And the one oh five C are the?
Bordering counties.
Bordering counties.
Yes.
So that's the difference. All right.
It's backwards.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, one oh five is, one oh five C, I believe, is local.
Yep. Intermediate school districts continues to GIST.
Correct.
Okay. So, uh, with that, I would entertain a motion for the first resolution, which is one oh five.
So move.
Support.
I think I had Alicia, do I hear Alicia?
No.
And then Mike, was it Jessica?
Jessica.
You sound alike sometimes. And then Mike? Okay. Any comments or questions? Be resolved that the Swartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves schools of choice program section one oh five opt-in as presented. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next we have the one oh five C. Need a motion?
So move.
Jessica?
Support.
Brian? Any comments or questions? Be it resolved that the Swartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves schools of choice program one oh five C opt-in as presented. Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, anything else, chief? All right. Um, now have an opportunity for public comment. If you'd like to address the board, please stand, state your name for our recording secretary, and, um, keep your comments to three minutes or less, please.
Oh, I'll be less than that.
Okay.
Some of you I know, some of you I don't. I'm Jerry Katic. Uh, my three daughters graduated from Creek schools over the last ten years. I'm fortunate enough to be, uh, on the oversight committee. And glad that I'll be able to work with the people that I'm on that committee with, as well as you guys, uh, so we can see that the advancement of this money is put into the places that it's supposed to go. I didn't expect to hear at this meeting tonight any bond talk communication, but I'm glad that I did because telling me that, uh, it's, it's in the mindset. And that's important if it's gonna get, uh, done and the money's spent the way it's supposed to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Hello, everyone, my name is Chad Pack. I live at seven two six five Nichols Road in Gaines Township. Um, what brings me here today is, this village was passed and everything, and I was really unconcerned with it 'cause I was under the impression I was part of Duran School District. Um, my neighbor to the right of me is from Duran, neighbor across the street's from Duran. Everybody that left of me, which is a quarter mile down the road, I live in the country, is Swartz Creek, I was unaware. So this village does impact me. Um, I have a two and a six-year-old that we currently homeschool, but may at some future date attend Swartz Creek schools. Um, that being said, I really appreciate some of the things you were talking about with that book and stuff, 'cause I have some of the same views as that you were speaking about in that book, um, that kinda thought process. So I support and encourage a lot of the things that you said today. Um, with that being said, I was unaware of the citizen oversight committee that was put together. Um, I was unaware of the application process, um, but I wanna be part of that. I don't know if it's possible, um, and I was unaware, like I say, I had no idea I was even part of the district. But now that I am, um, I like to be involved in these kinda things. And I know other people that are on the committee as well, and, not that that matters, but I think I would be a good asset and I could inform people just as well as anybody else. And I, I don't know if it's possible, but I would appreciate you guys to consider me being part of that committee if possible. And that's all I have to say.
Great, thank you. Can I just make sure that I get your contact info before, make sure we get your contact info, then I can reach out to you.
One hundred percent, sir, I appreciate it.
Great, yeah.
Thank you, thank you for being here, appreciate it. Okay, all right, comments and questions from the board?
Um, it wasn't until this point that I realized, we had agreed before to do public comment in the beginning. And we both.
I just noticed that.
That too, I'm like, oh, we were supposed to do that before. So, we just need to add that to the agenda?
Public comment, um, we'll do agenda-specific public comment at the beginning?
Yeah, so we had to prove that before we go back to the front, so it should be standing.
We, we had talked about that, and, yeah.
We did it at our last meeting.
We'll tart away through.
Yeah, we did it at our last meeting.
Yeah. No, it's okay, we all, it's all right.
It's brand new.
Oh, whoops.
We'll get it from that spot.
Public comment at the beginning, three minutes.
No harm, no foul, just.
Agenda-specific. And then three minutes at the end to whatever they prefer, he or she.
Any other comments or questions?
Yes, I am so impressed by what Michael's doing in our food program. And I also believe, I know MASP and, and other, I'm sure there's other, uh, places in the state where we could ac- actually apply for, uh, recognition for Michael and what he's doing. I know MASP has a really good, you know, uh, where they acknowledge programs like this, you know, things that are just very seldom done that have such an impact.
Yep.
So I'm hoping we can find those for our food program and Michael.
I, I'm so impressed by what he's doing too. And it, it's so responsive to the community's needs and the change, uh, changes that have taken place in our community, and I just love it. And the fact that it's so open and inclusive is amazing, so thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for finding him.
He's a gem, he is, he's a good, good gem.
Um, just for everybody's information, but the Genesee County Area School Board, remember? I don't know how many, there's a lot of letters to it. Um, do you get, do, is it just you and I that get information, or does everybody?
I'll be coming, April twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
And there's a, there's a couple special people from our district who'll be recognized. On top of, uh, your son, uh, Brian, as well, will be getting recognized, so.
What? What'd you get?
Can you tell us?
Yeah.
Or is it?
It'll be at the, at the award.
It's just a, it's a MASP. It's a platinum award.
And is he designing a scholarship? Good for him, good for him. Very nice. All right, anybody else?
No, I'm just impressed, Ben. I complained about the food. Just like the food, food in the kitchen and people not.
Didn't expect that as a response though, right?
No, I didn't, I'm, I'm really, I'm not impressed a lot of times with all the things I've done in my career and life. And I'm really, really impressed, because I know I was kind of sharp and, and strong about, I want the food out.
It's a great idea.
And, um, I'm sure you were behind it, I know it was Michael's idea, but you gave it to him. And I'm just really, really impressed, touched, and sincerely grateful that you guys did this. It's just, I think, and I think the idea, like Brian said, this is something that's model. I mean, it's, it, we don't need to be recognized for a model program. First of all, we need to be recognized for helping our community. Then the model stuff can come, which, and, and, and Brian's right, people are gonna look at this. And I think it's a, you know, I don't wanna say, a feather in the cap, because you know what? This is something big and it really touches a lot of people. It's great. Twenty years ago, you were responsible for your own lunch, thirty years ago, you know what I mean? That's the way it is, your mom gave you lunch money, you went in, we got it. I remember playing after-school sports. I was hypoglycemic, I would fall down because, you know, I had so much money and, you know, the food. And now with economic times as dire as they are with some families, they're not as fortunate as other families. I, I'm really blown away.
Thank you.
I am, I am, I, I congratulate you and Michael from the bottom of my heart. It's the greatest thing I've seen.
I also wanna thank Mrs. Billby, Mrs. Swales and Mrs. Brownfield for sending the district, I think that is important. Okay, anybody else?
I'm impressed.
Okay, going, going.
I'm not talking to anybody, goodbye.
Ken?
Stand by, bye. Good, that's it.
Gonna see it.